A little bit late and we ended up changing the meeting, so I hope everyone had a chance to pick a look.
I want to start by thanking everybody for coming to the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Does anybody have any?
Comments or corrections?
Make a motion to approve the.
As presented.
As presented.
Second. Second. Any further discussion? Home favor, I carries. Next.
Okay, um, we submitted the measures to the board. We're now at ninety-five percent of the year over. For, and I think of the most important piece is that we think we're going to finish the fiscal year. Well, we are. Part because of staffing issues, but we're in very good shape. With ninety-five percent of the year over and more specifically, very few major expenses are carrying the last. We are in in fine shape. That said then, the off warrant for this month was a one-one-one, E O two, six and three. And I then approached it down by operating a gift and rent. Really nothing tremendously out of the ordinary. We paid the last payment on our audit. But to find new, yeah. Um, but you will note that the national grid bill is a thousand dollars less than last month, which was a thousand dollars less than the month before. Um.
We'll take it.
Did anybody look and analyze?
Yes.
Is it usage or is it rates?
Both. Both.
Both.
My my electric bill is less.
Yeah, but it's just odd in November versus September. Uh, can't explain it, you know, why September was so high, but I mean, it is.
Why wasn't it in September?
Miles. It wasn't like like air conditioning laws. So in any case.
Yeah, it is what it is.
That's it is what it is, and that's great news compared to the alternative. So nothing specific in off warrants other than those edited out with a little bit to pay bills. Twenty-four and twenty-five.
Motion to accept the off warrant as presented.
Just on the on the agenda, it says November sixteenth, and I think November four. Karen for Jeopardy. So I go back on it again. Florida. And I would like to be on time. Because he knows that I basically am the day after the last quarter period. So even though, and the thing is that the reports really reflect the first day that check shows up. So that's why they discuss, but I always work with it. You know, like they said, not every day of the year is included in my report, even if a check wasn't cut. No, that's for me to issue.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, home favor. Eric.
As far as a warrant, quite small this month, um, in large part because of our pretty of ordoning off a month. Um, so it's eighty-nine hundred fifty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. Um. So there was absolutely nothing out of the ordinary in this group list.
Motion to authorize the president to sign the warrant. Second.
One second.
Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor. Hey. Financials.
Okay, um, as far as the financials go, I already mentioned that we.
I mean, hi friends.
All right. Honey, I was like. Just to me and Lynn. We were. So. You've been actively moving now the budget in the council reserve since nineteen fifty. I think that's. Commended and it was a year with a lot of volition.
Actually, in the next two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, that is just something to understand. I did talk to Dawn about. Whenever we are on some other things, I mean, challenges, there are things on order that will not be rewarded to you. It will come here because they have to provide a lot of cash. That's the way it is. So, um, but I'm not concerned. It's not fast. It's nothing. So, uh. So there we are.
When you said that we moved the one sixty-nine to fifty and to have covers.
No, 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 it's. Okay, so when you look. But when you go to the one com, we just get ninety-nine point three percent of budget that we're going to expect to come over. Most minor piece because of what we've been doing. This point, expenses, uh, we are slightly over budget for books and materials. Greatly over budget for facilities expenses, which we knew. Also that insurance. Was much over budget. Personnel. Payroll left and we're running at eighty-three percent of the budget. Uh, that's, you know, as far as the balance sheet, our cash assets are one point one million four hundred two thousand five. Two six seven cents, just down about nineteen thousand over a month ago. Um, our fixed assets remain, uh, for the month because. Depreciate once a year until next year.
Oh, that's when we start sort of monthly, okay.
It'll start.
So in reality, we have eleven months worth of depreciation today.
Correct, yep. Yes. Uh, so any questions on the balance sheet or? The depreciation. Um, so major assets that we think before this was anything. Twenty-five hundred that we bought that cost over twenty-five hundred dollars is depreciated over time. Um, now it's changed it, I think last month to five thousand, but that gets put on a grid. And in the past, we would appreciate it once a year. So run through the calculation. Let's say it would be a computer, because it would be any single item that's really expensive. Piece of equipment or a piece of furniture that's quite expensive. And then it would get appreciated over time. You know, it's a lot of this is building related.
It was different timeframe for different things.
So the building itself is depreciating over forty years. Stuff. Heat pumps and things are depreciated over X number of years.
Yeah, it's twenty or something.
Furniture maybe over seven years, et cetera. So the depreciation is just, until now, we've done it once a year. Early in the year, starting next year, based on recognition from our auditors, we've been starting with every month. So an item gets bought in March of twenty twenty-three, that depreciation will immediately begin. And every month we will see a one over how many appreciates, you know, much smaller reduction to represent. Where does that show up? It shows up in the month in this. This is all the depreciation, these are the depreciation.
Which assets name?
And the balance sheet. And so what we're going to see right now, if you look, it's been the same every month. All year, this depreciation. Starting next year, we're going to start seeing a slight decrease. More accurate. About we can hear instead of being once a year and spread out to do. And the question is only you.
Motion to approve the financial report as presented.
Thank you.
Second. Any further discussion of questions? If not, home favor. Any votes? And go off.
Just tempted, he told me last night, he is coming. And I just tempted him right now, do you remember the thing? He did not respond yet. No.
Maybe.
Maybe he's driving him, but like I said, he told me last night, he might not see me tonight, so. I just mean he's coming.
Okay, um. Else? Lynn?
No, nothing else.
Okay. This is the financials. Many reports.
Okay, so this month we worked on the table find and keys and the holidays days closed, both with a shirt and a packet. Um, the biggest staple rates are not changing a lot at the house. That would lose the. I think we're just matching a little bit more of what the other libraries in the area were doing, so.
So we were, that's okay, we were adding two days so that the library and. Library will be closed, but they won't be eight days. So we might be pursuing a loss. Depends what we are, but it will be closed two more days next year.
Labor Day.
Great.
The Saturday before Labor Day, is that?
Saturday before Labor Day and Saturday before Memorial Day. And.
Oh, the June.
Well, two professionals of development days and Juneteenth.
But Juneteenth's working, uh, not paid.
Not paid.
Okay, um, did we fix the sheet to show that summer twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Nothing correctly. Did we get the updated one? And then did they add new G?
That the reason it's not on here is because it falls on Sunday. Or close five annual rate days anyways on Sunday, so it's on.
Alright, so you haven't updated sheet this, this is my big mind update.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Be clarified, so there's no. So there's no typical Christmas or.
Oh, the Christmas.
Five o'clock, maybe five o'clock at here, so it's actually hard to clarify, so it's not really a.
A good.
It's a special anyway, so.
Okay. And did we want to approve this? And I'll entertain a motion. How much next year?
Make the motion to approve the holiday days.
Second. Any further comments or questions? All in favor? Eric.
Thank you very much. Another thing that we looked at, looked a little bit, was the table finds and these, now that we're going to find free, we discussed that there are still items that are still going to improve filings. Just, um, as you see, most of them are defined free, just for library things, stamp picks, stories to go in library, give me a pass, plus that. It's all supposed to find fifty-five dollars, you can just go like their savings. There's the fees for, um, the placement library portal, that sort of data here. And the big thing where they're not going to provide a refund, they'd be providing for if it's already been.
Once it's paid.
Once it's paid, you score, you can't get a refund on it. We used to do that, there's no. It's costing us money, time and money for that particular reason, and we agree that that's not necessary anymore. Attention, my dear teacher and fellow library, we'll be closing in ten minutes. Please bring all your selections to the circulation desk shortly. Yeah, check out your names next, closing down. Thank you.
Well, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion.
Second. Baby. Any further discussion? If not, home favor. Anybody opposed? No, okay. Alright.
Alright. I'm sorry, I'm. Um, I mean, we did talk about the upper Hudson library contract, we threw that back to them. Um, because we don't agree with the amount of the increase, so we're waiting for that to explain why they decided.
Well, it's not just the increase. Three or four of the twenty-eight libraries, they got it with five percent, when everybody else got, I think got three. And asked them to.
To have physically, I physically come there. Someone. We have to cover.
We need to. Who about that?
Over the open meetings law a little bit, there's still more, like I feel like it's still need to do a little more research. How it affects, typically if you're attending remotely or if it's a person. How much you're willing, how much will people hold ourselves to other, to outsiders, to the remote thing. Very confusing.
So is the question whether will livestream?
No, the livestream is fine. The livestream that like we're doing right now, that's allowed by the. It's like, do you want it to attend this meeting to be a participating member? You would have to declare your location. As a matter of fact. So the public could attend the meeting from that location, if you are.
But right now, if we say one of us on the board is traveling, but wants to attend the board meeting. We couldn't, we could attend, obviously, watching like I did, but one time just just the watching from YouTube. And that's it. Can't go or do anything.
Because of the, the rules have changed back, what we were, from state have changed back to back to our opening. Our bylaws, I believe, state only. Do we have any person in?
Okay.
And that is consistent, well, open meetings law, if we were going to extend it. Not only will we have, the board would have identified the specifics, circumstances under which we are allowed. And we, you know, a member to participate. So for now, I guess if anybody's not available, they can.
Yeah.
Which is what I was going to do last week. We had the meeting.
Right.
Um, I attended both committee meetings. And this was discussed in both committee. And I would say that the biggest difference that I heard was a sense of feeling about our committee meetings. When they fell under open meeting law and how. The second committee. Is not here, but he's someone who really felt that since we do not. We. But we're not. So it's a decision that we don't, don't up business, that they don't fall in. We went back to the school this very. Experience, uh. Whereas I think Mary and Lynn, you guys feel pretty strongly that they do fall in their open meetings. So that's something that will need to be resolved in the beginning of next year.
Authorize the AV projector replacement was that is definitely necessary for. It's not work. And. So this has to, replacement can be located and installed. Over. About the Rensler County funding, we're working on some more ideas to reach out to other members of our congressional and other, um. The folks to see if they're, to see if they're able to help us with our county as well. Mary, you looking to work on that a little bit or? Yeah. Some of those ideas. I know you've done a lot of work on that, so. But that's.
What are you, how are you worked on for the, I'm in need, so.
No, I can imagine. So, um, the first item that we are going to talk about is for, um. On enactment of, um, the T A L A unite against book bans initiative, which is brought to my attention. When I was at upper Hudson board meeting, um, that upper Hudson was going to be adopting this, they wanted each. Individual library to do as well. So we talked about it and, um, you know, I'll, help me read the whole thing.
Resolution.
Is resolution, alright. Okay, so it's, um, if there's any other discussion, right? So resolution against book bans, whereas reading is a fundamental skill, critical to future learning and to exercising our democratic freedoms. And whereas libraries provide access to books that offer teachable moments for readers of all ages. And expand our understanding of people with different backgrounds, ideas and beliefs. And whereas books are tools for understanding complex issues. And whereas limiting young people's access to books does not protect them from life's complex and challenging issues. And whereas young people deserve to see themselves reflected in a library's collection. And whereas librarians are professionals trained to not impose their own thoughts and opinions on which ideas are right. But to make knowledge and ideas available, so that people have the freedom to choose what to read. And whereas removing and banning books from public libraries or public schools is a slippery slope to government censorship. And the erosion of our country's commitment to freedom of expression. And whereas a large majority of Americans across the political spectrum oppose book bans. And whereas librarians are professionals trained to not impose their own thoughts and opinions on which ideas are right. But make knowledge and ideas available, so that people have the freedom to choose what to read. Whereas book bans harm communities. Then therefore be it resolved that the board of library trustees of the East Green Bush Community Library endorse the following statement. Individuals should be trusted to make their own decisions about what they read and read. Further, parents should not be making, should not be making decisions for other parents' children about what they read. We are united against book bans. Therefore, be it further resolved that we as the East Green Bush Community Library. Will act to protect the rights of everyone to access a variety of books in schools, in libraries, in bookstores, online and outdoor.
We do think it's parent.
Oh, it is, yeah, I didn't see that.
Yeah, I mean, you probably realized that was your reading.
Yeah, I figured, but it's a port word at the end, keep reading.
Yes. So.
Is that something that they, that's the same one they adopted?
That's the total.
Oh, so we can edit that.
Sure.
Yeah, right.
It's not a big deal, but it just.
It'll read nicer. Which one do you want to take out?
I just.
The second.
I'm taking.
Uh, that libraries are professionals.
I'll take a different one, honestly.
Well, yeah. Yeah, yeah, the libraries are professionals. They're different.
But I just wanted to know which.
Oh, because it's in two places, you want to take it out in the first part or the second?
I think the first part, is it the summary statement at the bottom?
I drive it home.
Yeah, yeah. And that's when it's like, I'm like, yeah, is it done for like driving it in or is it done because?
Well.
Because it's.
I'm not sure.
It just kind of hammered a little bit. I like what it put.
If we kept it in the middle, it's just, you know, another. Uh, bullet of justification, so it, I'm fine with the being.
Stay.
But you.
The second one is staying.
So the first one's coming up?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So how do we adopt it? Like what move do we make in order to do that?
We just.
I think we have a motion through.
And then should we like post, like just throw up on the website or is it just a email?
So what, what do we do that once we put quick, we'll make it, what's the next step? So then we then join, um. Like teach their, they have more education and be, there's all sorts of things and then. Wait, which is, we'll post it on our website.
It's all kinds of. So it's just at our discretion.
It's at our discretion, we know what to do. We believe this and then we can do it and we'll be so choose.
After we adopted the motion, that's.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution against bands.
Or second.
Second.
Karen made the motion, I made the second.
You have, sorry.
Any, any further discussion, comments or questions? Not in favor? Anybody opposed? No.
Pretty much all I had, I didn't know if there was any, um, of our service committee, if there was any, um, follow-up about. Patients with disabilities that we can, for me to know, is any?
I didn't hear anything. I mean, I.
Yeah, we should be.
Okay.
And we also two went over the fine three.
Yeah, we did that in both committees so that we could vote on that tonight and, uh. And the, uh. Other thing, the, uh. They'll have to put off for. What are we just?
Open meetings.
The open meetings.
The. They.
Yeah. But committee meetings are open or not? I vote no. I made this statement before because it was talked about in both committees, I think, and I attended both meetings. Biggest difference was that the admin committee members felt very strongly that they were required to follow open meetings. Um, the other committee basically wasn't, didn't feel that way, actually avoiding this one.
Yeah, I, my approach on it is, and I do point out is, you know, based on the school district, you have different committees. And those are not public meetings, right? Those are not where you gabble in, gabble out, you're also not making a decision. Difference between open meeting law and a committee meeting is you're making a recommendation, you're discussing. Difference between open meeting law and a committee meeting is you're making a recommendation, you're discussing, right? But you're not coming to a seven, or the full board voting on something. That's when it's an open meeting law. As long, you can have a majority at a event, as long as you are not making a binding decision, right? That's the difference, right? And so that's where a, a, a committee is, I mean, town has committees, right? I mean, town has committees, school district has committees. None of those are open meeting laws, but none of those are subject to open meeting laws. So that's how, you know, I mean, I just don't think, you, uh, there's, I, it's pretty standard that those are, those are for the business of the organization, they're not decision-making, binding decision-making.
And is that based on the updated open meetings law?
It doesn't matter. It's never been open. They've, they've never been open, meaning you've never had to post them publicly. You never have to gabble in, gabble out. That's, that's, I mean, to me, that is the, that is the difference. And Tom, I mean, you can, right, I mean, you, you guys, those committee meetings, it's never a gabble in, we'll take in a formal vote, okay, four against three, three, four, and so let's discuss, let's get an opinion. We'll, we'll make a final decision at a meeting that is subject to open meetings. That's, I mean, so that's not a recent interpretation of open meetings law, that's all organizations that have publicly elected officials, or however we want to call ourselves, right? You know, they don't, you know, those committee meetings are not open meetings, but subject to open meetings.
I'd like to go back and just review the training thing more because I, for some reason, it's stuck in my head that there could be like some new pieces to the meetings law.
I, I think that would have got gathered a lot more attention if they had made the changes that required these committee meetings to become open meetings laws. Because I don't, I don't.
I mean, it makes sense what you're saying, it makes sense to me.
And I did have in my notes, I, you know, one of the specific requirements was that was to make decisions. Like that made it, you know, if they made decisions, it would be subject to open meetings. But, you know, I guess if you look at the converse, you accept the converse and
There's nothing prohibiting you from making an open meeting. No, but it also, you know, make, if you make every meeting that this group has an open meeting thing, it, it becomes pretty unwieldy, is what I think. Okay. I mean, that it? Good, thanks. That gets us to a nominating committee. We normally do not do the motion that's in the agenda until January. But I think we should have a, an update on where we're at and what we've discussed for
Right there.
You basically have completed the work.
Yeah. The work that we set out to do.
I think the bigger thing to discuss is, and I threw this out, that it seems like the list of amount of work that needs to be organized and done is pretty big. Our tradition has been that committees do not meet in January because the board meeting is in the third week. Committee meetings are in the first week or two. Uh, they don't happen. Um, and, but with the big list that we have, we discuss, should we have organizational meetings? Committees, I think, are pretty much formed.
Yes.
So do you want to announce?
We do have the equity training, so.
Yeah.
It's a very, it's busy.
Yes, could you look at the agenda at the bottom of the agenda, what's new for both?
So, so one of the resolutions is that, I mean, technically, none of what, you know, the year begins at our January meeting. At that time Charlie will be accepted on the board and that's when all of us will accept our new positions. So it would be twelve hours to have a committee meeting when we really have any of them. So Charlie and it's charming people in and et cetera, et cetera. So we propose to have an organizational meeting, not really discuss the business, but really more talk about what is, what are the priorities of the year, what are the expectations of the committees and the meeting committees. Our thinking was to have one before one of the, uh, racial equity trainings, we would have services committee come before before and then another, I think the next week before the racial equity meeting, we have the service committee and then actually the first of the times would be to really have just kind of talk about the strategic planning, the proposal that we got, where do we have to go from here, you know, the money involved and things of that sort.
So is this strategic plan the first meeting that's proposed? Is that for a common, okay, that's for everybody? Because we had also talked about potentially having a committee to head up the strategic plan, is that something that's considered?
So there will be a, a strategic planning committee that's made up of more representation staff.
Liaison, so there will be that committee.
This is more than that.
This is, this is, we have to figure out what are we going to, who are we choosing to engage from the RFPs?
Okay, so the objective of that meeting is to choose which organization we request.
Start organizing the, how that's going to be. And the, the third one actually occurs after the board meeting, so that one, without, you know. Um, but basically, I think Lynn and Mary, the idea is to get a jump on the year and start organizing rather than pretty much the first month becomes a wasted month from the aspect of, of really getting things done or organized.
That's my idea. I think most people are there assigned, you know, what the plan is. We don't make committee assignments until we change. But in order to know who would be coming to these, we really, so.
Shay's going to everything, right?
I volunteer to be a part of how this all started, was I got part of the last strategic plan as a, as a participant, so I will join in that later in the year, after you guys.
So the service committee will be Amanda, Kami, and Mary. And the admin will be Charlie, Katie, Michael. I'll probably go to both. Is it Amanda? We haven't really.
Okay, no, sorry. Charlie, Katie.
Nope.
Charlie, Katie, Michael.
I think I've been doing a lot of the little, little bits of things. Just going back to the, um, game. People will be able to view the early meeting for the racial equity.
Yeah, yeah.
That keeps us to the three days rather than
Adding another.
Adding another meeting uh, for each committee, you know, during the month of January, so.
Would this be a good time to possibly throw out if there was a desire to change the time of any meetings? You know, not necessarily start the board meeting at seven thirty. God, true. Or maybe we can think about it, you think?
I think, I think, I think what you've done is is
What's your plan to see you?
He was throwing it out, waiting to see, people think about it. And then I think in January, it's something to be discussed and so on. Uh, my recommendation is to try and, and settle in on dates and times that are consistent throughout the year.
Right.
Because even Shay, I heard, forgot about today's meeting.
No, no, I would, no, I told you I would.
I did not say that.
I told you I'd be there.
I said I asked, so he forgot.
I asked, you know, I heard.
Didn't hear you, I asked. Thanks a lot.
Really, it's, it's much easier if you put it in your head. Meetings are certain days, certain times in the month, and set those aside, it's much easier to organize versus schedule that way. Uh, and last few years, trying to be more accommodating and I've sort of said, okay, everybody decide and we bounced around a lot more. And I know I have a tougher time keeping track.
What, what was you threw up, an earlier time for board meetings?
Right, yes.
And did you have a particular time designed or?
I, I didn't, I'm not sure like what time everyone's out of work and, or if you want to go from work to here before going home, like Upper Hudson is four thirty. We, but, no, I don't know the composition of that four is.
At one time, board meetings, I believe, were at seven o'clock. But then what we did was, uh, we joined the friends meeting on the same day as the board meeting and made it possible for board members to go to both and then pushed the board meeting to seven thirty. And because the friends meeting could have an hour before then, and that was a change at one time.
The friends have moved earlier than we are now, six, not six thirty.
I know, same discussion, but personally, I know all them are in conferences, it's real. Because it's just kids events for me personally, so. Over. One second, one second, I know, but, you're the trigger.
I apologize, I missed this Saturday morning meeting that you guys had. I apologize, but I want to thank you for taking your job and I'll be there to help you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. I mean, I'm not saying like I'm totally entirely opposed to it, I just know that I'll have more confidence personally. So.
And so, put it in the back of your minds, and I think that's something to discuss next month.
Will it be discussed at committee meetings?
You can.
Yeah, that would be a good thing, I think, actually. It's like a decision.
But in the end, you gotta come together.
Right, yeah.
We won't be making a decision at committee meetings.
Okay. Anything else we want to discuss along that line? A nominating committee organizational experience.
Did you want to quote the slate of officers?
No, the, the officers are, uh, appointed at the beginning of that meeting. Uh, the traditional thing is I will still start the next meeting. You will swear in. Um, Charlie?
And you? You guess four and in again?
And I guess I guess four and in again. I'll start the meeting and then.
There are two paths that I, basically.
But, but no, but they, well. Yeah, I, I, you would just do, we've done it, I think, once every five years, I.
You're upcoming and incoming.
Yeah, and then, and then, um, turn it over to the nominating committee. Then voter again and then we take over.
Alright, so we will not be doing this too much.
Jill, when we start the year, like what you did last year was to close all of the meeting dates on one document and start with last year at the beginning of the year, you enclosed all of the, you know, do you intend to do that, I guess, and lay out the schedule tentatively? Okay, great, so. That is, that's why I have on here at the bottom. Days so that if there's a big I would like to know before I put that calendar together.
Well, and that's, Kami, you'll be on service. So it looks like they switched the service and the admin, so that's somewhat of a compromise, like at least the committee meeting for you will be earlier. So that's something, you know?
We good sticking with this first Monday of the month still? Thursday at five o'clock? Five minutes since I started, so.
Okay, like, let's try.
Directors report.
Okay, so we're wrapping up the event here.
I, I did put together, or I did include programming from October and November, because in the last month's board meeting, I did not include the programming, so. Uh, just, and overall, we had twenty-six programs in October and thirty in November, with thirty-five sessions in October and twenty-nine sessions in November. One thousand six hundred and fifty-two people attended in October and one thousand six hundred and twenty-five in November. So very, very similar numbers between, um, October and November. Tradition, the, the traffic is so different than it used to be. We used to be able to count on certain ones, it's been really slow times and it's just not anymore, everything is up there, there's no traditional. Right now. Um, in terms of, so we were, we had, uh, nineteen percent more people here this year over the same month last year, November, so more people are coming through the door and five percent more than last month, it says last year on here, but it's last month. Interesting, some interesting numbers about our, our, I've been looking at the, the borrowing, the stats for the whole year and kind of averages and uh, we're, we're seeing some interesting shifts and trends here in our borrowing. Um, and November is very similar to where we are with our averages for the year. So eighty percent, if we, we're looking at just our physical bar, what's happening inside the library. Eighty percent of that borrowing is now books and twenty percent is non-book. It used to be much closer, we had a lot more DVDs, a lot more, you know, that, so it's, we're really going, moving to heavy books now.
That's because of screen, screen.
Yes, so. Now if we look at, um, so sixty-two percent of our borrowing is in person and thirty-eight percent is e-content.
Wow.
That includes, so a caveat for that is, that includes renewals in the in-person, total borrowing. So we're just looking at checkouts, we're, we're closer to, I want to say it's so. If we're not, yeah, if we're, if we're not including renewals, e-content is fifty percent of our total checkouts in November, fifty percent if we're not including renewals. So that's a big shift as we're looking at strategic planning and we are still seeing people come through the door, they're still coming in, but fifty percent of what people are borrowing is not happening in the building. is not happening in the building, which is, I mean, that's a mind shift. That's a, that's a big shift.
So are you saying the people that are coming in are merely attending programs? Do you think, or they're coming in as they're just adding books?
What we're trying to figure out is are there different people? So are there people who are just using us digitally or are there people who are using us? Are they reading digitally and print books? You know, it's, it's really tricky. I mean, we, we, we do know that not everybody who attends programs borrows materials. Not everybody who's attends a meeting comes into the library. I mean, if we were to rebuild the library, we'd have the meetings in the back, you know, just like the milk is in the back of the store. And get people to go through there. So it's, it's, it's an interesting shift here. Uh, forty-seven percent of our usage is East Green Rush and eighteen percent is Scudex. So very similar to kind of in the past, maybe even a little bit more Scudex. Um, but very, very similar. So that is, I mean, that's, that's just a big shift. So it's strategic planning will be really important for us with our survey to try to reach out to people who are, who, we always want to reach out to people who are not using the library and say, why are you not using the library? What can we do to serve your needs? But now we also really need to reach out to people who are using the library and saying, how are you using us and are you using us in multiple ways or just this one way? Because that'll really change how we're delivering services and where we put our money. That's interesting. Now cybersecurity, we are still deep in that and making some really good progress. With cybersecurity, um. Strategic planning, we received ten proposals, so we're, we'll be talking about that early next week. Next month, the first weekend, January, we'll talk about that. Uh, we got, we had some really great proposals there. Um, we're, the big thing that we're doing that I'm working on right now is QuickBooks Online. We've transitioned everything now to, we have a, a live QuickBooks Online. And, um. Back to go January one. Everything into QuickBooks. Moving just to QuickBooks Online, but we'll keep our QuickBooks desktop for at least a year so that we can get through the audit and everything. And make sure we have, you know, all the records of the desktop in desktop form. But it looks like, still tweaking a few things, um, but it looks like we'll be able to break all of her. It looks like everything, everything definitely came in. It's just there's, there's one thing that I found last night that I'm not sure if it's going to work with our, the way that we have our grits set up in there. So yeah, we gotta figure, fix that. And then if that can be fixed, then we have all of our old data. Which is much better than we thought. That's a big positive.
Any other, any questions about anything else?
Do you get any sense of like foot traffic? I don't know if you have any data on that, but just your vibe while they're, people that, you know, butts in the seats or people doing, you know?
Yeah, so, so we had ten thousand three hundred and twenty-two people come through the doors in November, which is, um, five percent over last month, nineteen percent over November last year. So people are, we're not seeing quite a time right now.
Yeah, and we have an idea of what November nineteen was.
I do, but not in the top of my head right now.
I don't expect it to be in the top of your.
But yes.
It's, it's something that, that I look at as a measure that's pre-COVID, so.
I will say, when I've been here, meeting will seem to reduce a lot now, like with the even outside groups.
Yeah, so outside group usage is not as robust as it used to be. We have a lot of programming happening and a lot of community partnerships that we have going. So we do have some groups. We are doing tax aid training. So a big piece with tax aid, so this year we were really hoping to bring tax aid to the library and we, we had been working towards that. Unfortunately, the person who used to run it here at the library passed away. And she was wonderful. She did it for years and years and years. So that's, you know, we weren't able to bring it back last year. ARP, um, identified a person who's been working with us. Unfortunately, they were also working in many se- several sites and it's, they just don't have the bandwidth. And we had to pull a plug because if we're not going to do it well, we're not going to do it. So we, we have, they're still using the space here to do training for, for their sites and we're keeping that partnership going. We really hope to be able to offer it here. But, um, it was supposed to go live January one and we still didn't have all of the information we needed to make that happen, so. We did a decision on Friday that. Badly, um, so that's a, that's a bummer. There are sites, um, who's, uh, H U C C. Centennial Valley is offering it, um, not through, they're offering the VITA site. So there's a, there is a, um, income requirement. But our lowest income will have an opportunity, you know, in a fairly large site. Where we are right now.
Anybody have anything else for Jill? Uh, we have a personal memory, and.
Yeah, personal memory.
Old business facility study. Uh, Jill and I met with an architect two weeks ago. Now that Jay is leaving, that Shay is leaving, um. We're finally going to get around hopefully to doing the facility study. We, we met with them, uh, it's a local firm and the representative that we talked to was somebody that I've known for over twenty years uh, and worked with for twenty years. And he brought along a, a younger staff person. We had the first meeting, we walked him through the building, explaining to him building condition surveys is something that architects do. Uh, he's doing it, proposing to do it in conjunction with the engineers that we've been working with. We're doing all the sort of plumbing, mechanical, electrical work in our building. They've worked together before. Uh, and we got a proposal. We were hoping to get the proposal last week so that if it was all right, we could hopefully approve it tonight and go with it. Unfortunately, Jill didn't forward the proposal to me until twelve thirty-two this morning.
I got it at ten thirty.
But, well, sent it to me too. Unfortunately, ten thirty last night, there's nothing that, uh, we can deal with tonight. Uh, we will review it, over it. It's a little higher, it's higher than I've been hoping for, but we need to look at it and evaluate it. And so that'll be something that I presume we will work towards approving in January. The timeframe for the study is eight weeks. So that should, if you do it in January, February, March, that should tie into the strategic. And the budget. And that's our update on that, um.
So if we approve it, they can start immediately?
They, 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 yes. But they're not sitting there waiting for us to approve it. Uh, and they have work and they're busy.
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
But, uh, they put into it eight, eight weeks from, only give them the go ahead.
And does it, is it seasonal at all? I mean, is there any?
There's some pieces that they said they would put off the next year. Includes a full facilities analysis, the existing building. This is not, doesn't include designing new things and doesn't include any of that. It's taking our building, assessing its condition, breaking down into elements. What needs to be done short term, which is up to three years, intermediate is five years and long term, ten years. And putting some prices on that that gives us a gauge of what we should be looking for and planning for. And then we will also be probably talking with them about strategic planning. Logically, you talk to them and say, okay, well, we want to put another twenty thousand square foot addition on the back here. What might that cost? That's different. That's not part of this. But, um, you know, you ultimately can retain them to do things like that as well.
So they, is, is that something where they would participate as, um, part of our team, strategic planning team?
Not directly. They would provide when we. When, I'm trying to set it up in such a way so that this is the first element of what we really need.
Yes.
I'm also trying to set up someone to take the place of me. So that when something really goes wrong, that's the person you call and they'll say, you need to go. Unfortunately. And if it's time that we get somebody else and we have nobody who's, uh, skills to call, just doesn't have those skills. Uh, and if you can develop it, maybe it's all relationship building. I had relationships for quite a while. I had it with the old C H P Health Maintenance. In the, for twenty years and I did it for thirty-five. Decide to look at things differently, but.
Well, it'll be important for Jill to have the relationship.
Needs, you need somebody to call. So hopefully we can start.
So can I ask two quick questions? How often would one have one of these major stuffs on building conditions?
If, if this study is done, then it's something that you might update periodically. The school district required these things to be done every five years. I used to do them, I did, I think, two or three for East Greenberg Schools.
From what I understood, from when I read, read the book. It includes the outside ambience.
We had talked to them, Phil brought up furnishings and, and they were going to, we said, separate that out. It's not separated out, it's in there, so I'd want to see if it's not separated out.
The furnishings, is that, um, like stuff that would be stationary booked into the building?
Built into the buildings, like the bookshelves, the, the, the desk, the desk and those things. Um, I don't think it's like the chair you're sitting on.
You say you had two questions?
Inside, outside, yeah. Lighting, because I think I counted from including that there's the sign. And then five, five or six out of the first nine lights are out.
On the street?
Yep. I think there's three in a row right here, then there's one light on, then there's another one off. There's one light on, uh, when you turn the corner, and then there's one or two that are off and the sign. And I think we just have to address that.
You said the sign is out again too?
Not our direct sign, the sign out.
Corner?
On the corner. It's been out for quite a while. And it's a shared thing between the three.
We want someone to come out and look, but wait, there's a.
And then we should look at, we replaced our parking lights with LED. I don't believe that's been done on the street.
That is not.
And that really is something we should go after to do.
It's a partnership with all the Y and the shitty. You'll be doing that, Jill? You're doing the follow-up with that? Uh, well, so replacing bulbs, yes, moving to LED.
Is different, but I don't know that it's replacing bulbs, I don't think. Because typically those things become very dim, those light fixtures. But they don't burn out for a long time. I think there's something like probably two or three circuits that.
Are out somewhere.
And then I think only one of the two or three, however many there are, is really on.
Yeah, it's got to be an electrical thing with.
It's an electrical thing. Well, it's, it's an electrical thing, but there's conduits and wires going from pole to pole. There's a transformer station with a panel that's down between us and the Y, I believe. And somewhere there, it could just be breakers off. It, it could be as simple as that. I mean, that's, I'd start, but I think we need to look at it. What happened, I believe, was, well, we had the sign, the big sign was replaced. I've been either the Y or Northeast Health did the lead on that. We didn't have much to do with it. And I think since then, I don't know, they, they literally rewired portions of it. And since then, I don't know that it's really been working right. It doesn't look good when you drive up and there's big dark sign and no lights and occasional light, I think it's.
Oh, getting that nighttime lights on the cars. Is it another scene? I don't think anyone.
I don't know what kind of.
It's beautiful digital sign in front of the college on the line. Something, yes, like something like that.
I did, I did that for a lot of years.
That was also.
Yeah. Twenty-five to fifty.
You'd have to go for part of the structure.
I think it's, I think it's a great thing to think about and you can put, you know, closures, you can put something.
Okay, any, have any other questions on that? I have another old business. Reports, friends.
Sure. Again, Christ, for those of you that don't know me, I'm the founding president and ongoing book sale chair. Um, so we have a goal this year to, um, get our online sales to five thousand dollars a month. We're there now, but like stay consistently there. Uh, because the book sale itself is probably about half or even less than half each time we run the, the book sale, so we're making up for it with the ongoing sale, which has been great. Um, so the team, the sorting team we have is all done on Adopt a Shelf, on the Adopt a Highway. So they restock the shelves. We're doing a much better job of refreshing the books, seeing what's selling, getting new books out there, trying. books, seeing what's selling, getting new books out there, trying to keep that number up high. Um, so we'd like to stay at that thousand dollars if we can. Um, and we've also committed to doing gift baskets, uh, five times a year. They've been going well, so the next one will be a Age of Thrones in Frozen. We kind of go by, we donate it, so if it's coming free, we turn it into a basket. So we are really nice to give a run set, so, um, we're trying again to keep that going, keep the momentum going as we're just really working out. And then, um, membership, we are now going to use the online membership form, try to so we're hoping to increase our membership, and then our renewals, and see how the like name goes as we, as we're faster, as we're working. So that's a big initiative, we have a big plan in January, it's in another year, add to C will be a big thing, we have a, that re- re-energized board, we've got a lot of new members coming in, um, we hope to fill our board force, uh, fully, so we wouldn't have even a vice president. Um, so we're really looking to see longevity for the factor, really make sure that. You've done friends.
Really, the book sale, the organization of, I, because I love books on Sundays, after every book sale and say that first, I figure out what, what the plan was, and everyone says, it's like, done, everything's, uh, it really.
It was a record breaking issue, that, that breakdown was possible.
Absolutely, so.
So I hope Shay that you're not going away, and I'll still see you any.
I blame Kevin McCann from 20 years ago calling me up and saying, hey, would you come and help out at the book sale? So I'm not going anywhere.
Good, good, good. Well, now we've got a system, it's not something that.
Exactly.
Unless you have anything else to share?
There's a, um, we have a meeting for Jill to step up the usage, to really, the platform we use for membership and comms, to really get it to the next level, to get further engagement with the, uh, the friends membership base. So that's promising.
One of the things that we are doing though is we're making co-chairs, so we don't lose people, so we finally filled the database position, but we filled it with two people. So we're really working on co-chairs.
Yeah, we did that here with.
Well, that's it from our corner.
Okay, Ed?
Not too much going on now, we've got the organization meeting coming up, uh. And it will be announced at this next quarter, once it's scheduled for, rate dropping the speed limit down to 25 on all roads. So please, please come and attend the public meeting.
When will that be? I don't know.
That's scheduled, yeah, so, we'll find out.
What is the reason?
Yeah, one, what roads? Now, here's my.
Yeah, okay, I gotta, I gotta say, I'm sorry to be blunt and say, that's crazy. There's a road by me where it is, and all of a sudden it's 45, which is what the rest of the world thinks it should be, as soon as you leave the town. And it's a county road.
What is the reason?
Uh, there's been a lot of complaints of people just out of being speed limits, so I figure if they were, they'll, you know, instead of doing 45, they'll do 35.
And what roads does it affect?
Like Phillips Road, uh, not really Phillips, I'm sorry.
Your street, Phillips Road isn't counted.
My street.
My street.
Does this mean like Columbia Turnpike or is that?
No, Columbia Turnpike is a state road.
It's a state.
Forward's a state road. Uh, Phillips Road is, believe it or not, a county road, Hange Road is a county road, Beston Road, Beston County roads, but their old best is 30 in East Greenwood. Yeah, I don't know how they got that through, but. So ma- mainly it's supposed to like, you know, your Horizon View Drives, all your inner areas, you know, Sherwood Park, all that area in there, Woodland Park.
Huntswood?
Huntswood.
Elliott.
Elliott?
Elliott. Elliott's a big one.
Yeah.
Mannings?
Yeah, yeah. Bridge.
It depends on the kind of work case it is. Depends on.
One of the roads you don't even want to be doing that anyways. That's one of the things that are going to come out, um.
I think I read a study at one time that setting speed limits too low for what the road is designed for traffic is actually more harmful than to it.
Yes, I agree. There's a lot of people out there, so we're going to let them have their voice.
Thanks for telling me.
Um, what else? Um, this kind of touches on something Tom's going to probably talk about, but our county office building has started its phase one move. Next, uh, movement will be, you know, where you go to pay property taxes, real property taxes, finance, all that, far over here. A lot of the departments are not yet, so it's about halfway. But Ed, you got anything else?
More vehicles will, uh, will be here, they say now in the first quarter, so, uh, I love your, I love the optimism, but I'm the one dealing with the state of. Yeah. So God bless you. Um, I'm glad to see the data management position is filled at the front, I'll date myself, that's like for those of you who are movie enthusiasts, uh, uh, like the drummer in the movie, uh, this is Spinal Tap, you can't stay in there for too long, so they've got better odds with the two of them now, so that's. We just tonight, this is I just passed, just to be in luck, we just tonight, uh, gave final passage to the county budget, so we're all squared away, uh, on that as well. Uh, we were at the, um, the, you know, the, the first training, uh, G two, uh, one skill at the new, uh, fire on training. This is a state of the art facility, there's still some, you know, things are going to be worked out with it, but you're going to have people, uh, trained in real life situations in a modern facility, which we haven't had for 10, 20 years. So that's, uh, if you get a chance, it's in, uh, on Macho Lane in, uh, Duane's Guild, just past Palombardi's on 150. Yeah, I wouldn't say drive, drive by it and get a good sense of what you're doing. Again, um, the class was very enthusiastic, a number of them, of East Greenwood residents of East Greenwood, there's a strong interest in, in the class, and they're doing really good work for, for all of us.
So Tom, you said it's completely open now, I mean, you're finished?
Pretty much, it's, you know, some work that's got to be done still, but the graduating, the, the first class graduated there tonight. Uh, there's still a couple of little things we have to punch up on, but for all intents and purposes, it's, it's, it's completed. The, uh, again, the budget, uh, Mary Fran Machunas, I don't know if you know her, she's the director, our health director in the county, she was appointed tonight legislature as the deputy county executive. Previous deputy county executive was Stacy Farrar, who was the budget director, who was retired, so this necessitated a, uh, a new appointment. She's just wonderful, I mean, she's, uh, she helped us get through COVID, uh, in the county, we had very good response, uh, to the, uh, the pandemic here, and doing no small part of her work. And so she's good, in addition to her job, as, as our health director, uh, she's going to be serving as the county, uh, deputy county executive, which she'll have a hand in all the departmental issues and all the executive decisions, so we have a plus. Uh, I think that's about it, if you, if you have any questions or comments. Oh, what, just one other thing too, you know, Shay leaving the board, Michael in a new, different role, Charlie leaving and incoming, uh, a lot of good transitions, a lot of, uh, you know, exciting times for everybody, and you as well, transitioning as president, uh, exciting times for everybody here, look forward to working, uh, with, with everybody in their new roles, and it's great to see Shay's volunteering now to head up the strategic planning committee. I remember the last one, uh, how long did that start, how long ago was that?
When Jill came on board.
Yeah, just about then, yeah, yeah.
Like the first thing Jill.
It's 2015, yeah.
It was when you came on board, it was the first thing to do, you said, and I want to dig into it because that's something I want about this place.
It was wonderful, I mean, we, we were on, it was a wonderful experience, you really did, uh, learn, strong learning module of how this place operates, and the, and the impact, how this, this library, uh, has on the community as a whole, I mean, you, you tend to take it for granted, to really dig into a strategic plan, to really get the sense of how much people rely on, on, on this place. And so, thank you very much. And we thank you for sticking with us.
Yeah.
Yeah, Kenny's trying to move the times and dates around a lot. If we can, we can do that, you know?
We invited a town representative for almost, well, I, I have to say it, for the 30 years I've been doing this, and you were the first one that came for more than one reading.
It's like the, uh, the, the data manager.
Get you some jump sticks.
No, it's, it's, and I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, it's just, it's been wonderful, thank you for allowing me to be involved with this role all these years, I appreciate it very much.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
So, tonight is Shay's last night, normally we do this as a beginning meeting, but.
She forgot, but I told Jill.
So I would be here at a prior commitment. Shay's completing his term, five years, and I remember Shay when we first sat down and, and had the discussion about you joining the board, I was least as punch, and I've been so happy that you've been part of this, uh, for the last five years.
Thank you. You will probably be the last recipient of one of the things in this family.
Should he have a birthday?
Christmas present, I wait till I leave. There's the traditional plaque thing. I appreciate it.
There's one other thing in there.
There's one thing in there, yeah. Was that a gold card?
It's the.
Like the MX.
It's the gold fine tree for life card that is not needed anymore.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
And, uh, before we end, I did my last meeting with designing of all of these things, which I've got in the Twitter screen, I have, so, uh, I've enjoyed doing it, I've met a lot of people, um, yeah, I've been a big part of it, but so many other people had, did so much more to make this library what it is, and I really appreciate it. So I'm going to step back, take a little more backseat role and help out for my last year or so that I'm still going to stick around. Uh, but I want to thank everybody for everything they do in making this place what it is. And now we have our new co-presidents, starting with all formalities and Robert's rules and so on, I think we're going to have to get them to dabble. And then, but I will stick today with just asking for who wants to make the most favorite motion.
End the meeting.
All in favor? Thank you all, I hope everybody had a great night.
You too.
You too.
The Lussey Library we have. Yeah. Do you want something, thank you, card and trees, please, yes, to get an upgrade.
I will, uh, get an upgrade.
But you can, you can call me, if you want to. And the option, the first bill is why now. Yeah, I think, I know, for old times' sake.
So graduations.